Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This time I'd like to call order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission on October 3, 2019. Let's begin with roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Seal?
Here.
Commissioner McCarver?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Here.
Commissioner Perrow?
Here.
Thank you. Absence is Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Item A, item 5A, will be opened this evening only for the purpose of continuing this item, so we will not be taking public testimony on the Garter Creek Town Homes application this evening. So if you're here for that, I apologize, but the applicant requested that we continue that hearing, so we will set a new date for that this evening. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda, number three, items A and B. Approval of minutes for the September 19, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Findings of fact, conclusions of law for TM Creek East Apartments H20190089. I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. So I will be making a presentation on explaining the public hearing process, but I'll wait to do that before the hearing for Inglewood Place this evening, so it's fresh in your minds. But this time we'll go ahead and move forward with a presentation by the Fire Department. They've come this evening to chat with us a little bit about the information that they share with the public prior to our hearings and to help us understand how they approach the information that they give us regarding the applications. Welcome.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much. How about now? There we go. Whoa, look at that. Okay, one more time. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity. I apologize it's taken this long to get here. This week I received a phone call from Mr. Wardle, and apparently there was questions about the Fire Department report on some previous projects that have come forward to you, and so I thought I would come today just to give you a quick overview of what I put in the report and why it's there. So the first section, so the top section of my report has the items that staff typically looks at and what city council looks at. The bottom half of the report is just standard international fire code items that we spell out specifically to that project. So the very first item on the top of the report is the Fire Department response time. So the travel time from the nearest fire station, our level of service expectation goal is five minutes. That's our goal. We understand we can't always make that goal. As it currently stands right now, Fire Station 5, the houses directly behind Fire Station Number 5, we can't get there in five minutes. The way you have to go around the block and wind through the subdivision, it's actually faster to go through the fence than it is to go all the way around to hit the houses directly behind Station 5. So in my report, as an example, let's say this development is six minutes under ideal conditions from the nearest fire station, Fire Station whatever. This fire station is approximately so many miles from, excuse me, the project, and then if approved, the Fire Department can or cannot make that goal. With Fire Station Number 6 coming, if it's appropriate, I've been making a note on the response times that, hey, Fire Station Number 6 is coming online, it's within so many minutes of the project, and it's also so many miles from the project. So at some point, and I'll get there, March is when that's slated to open, and so we will have our response times from that station once it opens. The second item that you'll find is the resource reliability. And what the resource reliability is, is what's the current reliability of that fire station to whatever the project is? Our goal is 85%. So what that means is 85% of the time, when a call comes in to that fire station's district, they're actually able to go to that call. So that means 15% of the time, they're typically out on a call doing something else, and either on another call, or training, or whatever, and they are unable to make it as the first due engine. So the example is this development is closest to Fire Station Number 1. The current reliability is 63% from the fire station and does not meet our targeted goal. And I can tell you right now, none of our fire stations meet the targeted goal of 85%. We are getting to that point where, yes, Fire Station Number 6 is coming online, and actually, let's talk about the numbers. So from July of 2018 to December of 2018, this is what the reliability looked like. So Fire Station 1 was at 65%. So that means only 35%, 65% of the time, they were actually able to respond to their own calls. In June, we rolled out Engine 36, so right now we have two engines running out of Station Number 1. We have Truck 31 and Engine 36. So as you can see, for the last couple of months, Station 1's reliability went up to 81%. Again, because we're running Engine 36 and Truck 31 out of that fire station. And then you can see as the calls fluctuate, the numbers dropped a little bit for the other fire stations, but that's typically where we're in that 70% to 80% range for the station reliability. So in the future, in our tenure CIP, we do have slated for Fire Station 1 to put a squad there. And that squad, their predominant thing that they will be doing is running medical calls. So that will lessen the number of calls for the truck and make the reliability better in that fire station. And then obviously, the other thing we can do is build more fire stations to increase that reliability as well. Councilwoman Mylum made the comment one night at a council meeting, "Fire stations just don't pop up overnight." It takes at least three years to plan a fire station, and actually, in our tenure CIP, that's when the next fire station is slated, is in three years. So we'll see how that goes. The third item that I put in my report is risk identifications. What are the risks that are associated with this development? Is it residential? Is it residential with hazards? Typically, a residential with a hazard would be, is there a pond? Is it commercial? Is it commercial with hazards, like an industrial center or something where they may have chemicals or something to that effect? Or is it industrial? So for the example, this proposed commercial development has a risk factor four, in which current resources would not be adequate to supply service to this proposed project. Risk factors include firefighting in multi-story buildings, large gathering of people in a single location. This entails a greater risk for the occupants as well as first responders. Fire life safety systems and occupant training are critical for this development. So this is an example of a multi-story building. I believe I stole this from the Alquest project down on Chindon and Highway 16. So we try and identify what are the biggest risks that have to do with whatever this project is that comes before you. The big thing, the other big thing that I take care of is accessibility. How easy is it and do the roadway accesses? How is traffic going to affect us getting to this project? So example, is this project meets all the required access road widths and turnarounds? Typical issues that I find when I get planned sets are cul-de-sacs are not the proper size. I've been trying to work with the Ada County Highway District on getting them to change their standard drawing. Their standard drawing does not meet the fire code. The fire code minimum requirement is 48 feet for the radius. Their minimum is 45. So they don't even meet the fire code. So I met with them earlier this year and asked them if they would actually change their standard drawing to meet what the fire code requires. So we're working on that. Sonia can attest, we've found some projects where they've had block lengths that were too long. We'll have over 30 homes on a single access. So by the fire code, if they have over 30 houses, we have to have two points of access. That's why we always have those secondary emergency routes getting into these projects. Or you can have up to 200 apartments, as long as they're all sprinkled on a single access. So anything over 200, you have to have two. Accesses too close together is another big one. According to the fire code, our two access points, if it's required to have two, have to be half the diagonal of the property apart. So a lot of times they'll put, like, if they have a long skinny one, they'll have two right next to each other, and those don't count because they're too close together. So they have to come up with some other access somewhere else. And then the last item is specialty resource needs. You know, is the building over 30 feet tall? Do we need an aerial device if we're over 30 feet tall? So if that's the case, then our goal, again, our travel time goal for the ladder truck is 12 minutes to get on scene. And then that also kicks in, you have to have wider roadways. You have to have 26-foot roadways for the ladder truck to be able to set up and operate. And then are there any other specialty needs? Water rescue, if there's a pond. The Meridian Fire Department does not do water rescues. We have PFDs, but we are not trained in water rescue. So we have to do a mutual aid request for Boise Fire, Eagle Fire, somebody that has the proper equipment to come and do water rescue. Same thing with hazmat. Boise Fire has the hazmat team. Canton County also has a hazmat team. So if we need a hazmat team, it just takes extra time to get them on scene. Or if there's some sort of technical rescue, like a rope rescue, or something to that effect. And then what, you know, what's the travel time required to get them there? Water supply is also a big thing. Typically, the things that come to you as a commission, our water is adequate. The city takes care of all of that stuff. So again, what our expectation is for the code, I try and put down what I'm guessing what the water requirements are, depending on what the building's made of. You know, typical house is 1,000 gallons a minute for an hour, and the Meridian Water Department can typically, we don't have problems in this area. In my rural areas, we do, but not here in the city that you guys are seeing. Any other comments? I kind of talked about this. Anything past that point from there down is just standard fire code stuff that we put in there to, you know, emergency access requirements, gate requirements, no traffic calming devices without the Fire Marshal's approval, things like that. That's typically what the other comments are. Station 6 I mentioned. Station 6 is being built right now. If you have not been there, it's straight across the street from Camping World on Overland. It is slated to open in March of 2020. Last I heard, it's on time, and actually, it's a week. They're fixing it to be finished a week early, and it's on budget so far. And then the other big question that I get asked a lot is Station 7 and Station 8. So Station 7 and Station 8, we currently, the Fire District owns property across from the regional park out on Lake Hazel. They own four acres out there, two of it slated to be for the Fire Department. And we are working with the Gander Creek project over by Waihee High School. They are offering to, we're working a deal with them for 3.76 acres of land. The big question is which one's first? And the problem is, we don't know that at this point, because that's where we have to look at where our call, where's our call volume going? Is it going to be heading towards Chindon? Because we're going to have Waihee High School, we're going to be having the Alquest project, the hospital, and everything out there at Highway 16 and Chindon. We've got Costco coming. You know, what's that going to do to Station 5? And at the same point, you know, we have Brighton Building, tons of stuff out, Hillsdale, you know, out past that area. So at this point, we don't know where Station 7 is going to go. But we do own property on those two locations, it's just a matter of which one gets picked. So at this point, I can't answer that question. And that's all I had. Do you guys have questions?
Before I butcher your name, would you say it for me?
Bonjourne.
Okay, that's what I thought. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Bonjourne?
I have a couple.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Is it possible, Deputy Chief, for you to give us a summary? I don't think, I've seen the breakdown of all that, but at the end of it, or on top, of saying, this project, I mean, as far as the Fire Department is concerned, we can't, you know, we don't want to see this project move forward for this reason, this reason, this reason. Instead of trying to pick things out and trying to read this report, this helps tremendously, but instead of trying to pick some of these things out, not making sense, like that reliability goal that you mentioned, I mean, I would look at that and say, well, it doesn't meet reliability, how can that be? How can this project be, how can we move forward on if the Fire Department can't meet the call? So that helped. But to have a summary there in the beginning, it says, the way this project is laid out now, the Fire Department cannot serve, I mean, can or can't. You know, we're comfortable with it, or we're not, something like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner, I mean, it's kind of like the ball field thing. You know, if you build it, we'll come. We'll be there. It's just a matter of how long it takes us to get there. The report is really for staff, the planning group, and they look at the whole picture. Does this fit into the city planning, you know, for the whole, it's the whole system that we got to look at? So I'm just, I was talking with Mr. Jorgensen the other day. We're just a piece of the pie. So I can't say, yeah, no, you know, it shouldn't be built. I can just, I can tell you what the facts are. It's going to take us six minutes to get there, or longer. You, as the commission, can make that determination whether or not you want to approve it or not. Again, looking at the whole, the whole picture. Again, I'm just a small slice. So I don't think I could, I could tell you, no, don't build it, because we'll service it.
Yeah, but could you give a comfortable opinion in terms of, we just, we can't service this the way we'd, you know?
Sure, yeah. No, there are some examples that I have out in the rural. It's like, I can't do anything with this. You don't have water. What are you going to do if it catches fire? You know? So we have made a couple, you know, we've stretched. The sprinkler place out there on Highway 16 and Chindon was a perfect example. I wasn't the Fire Marshal at the time, but that one project, we had to get a letter from their insurance company, because that was way out there. And we just, you know, and that's why I said, we're just a little piece of the pie, and we got to look at what staff recommends along with that. Does it make sense to put that project out, you know, at the end of Eagle Road or wherever?
And as far as the goal, you're not meeting it anywhere, so that helps me to understand that.
Yeah, it's a goal.
What goes into that?
Right.
Is there a number on the response time? Your goal is five minutes.
Five minutes, correct.
But is there a number there that's not acceptable? That when we're looking at this, if you say it's 10 minutes, I mean, are we talking life and death at that point?
That's a long time, yeah. When you get, when you start getting into seven, eight, nine-minute responses, that's a lot, especially if the house is on fire. The way our modern construction is nowadays, and the way our furniture is built nowadays, it's all gasoline, it's in one form or another, and the stuff burns like crazy. So if we have those longer response times, the chances of bad things happening obviously multiply. So that is a bigger problem. So I would think, you know, if you're in that six, seven-minute range, I would definitely look at everything else that's going along with it. And that's why, you know, we encourage sprinklers and residential sprinklers. Unfortunately, I've been hamstrung and can't require them, but I can highly encourage them, because no one has ever died in a house that was sprinkled. No one. So that's an option as well, that we can do for these subdivisions that, like, we want to build this. Okay, sprinkler houses. I'll go 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
So there are options. Yeah?
So I have a couple of questions for you. So when you're referring to the five-minute goal, are you talking about standard, single-family residential areas? Or give us the parameters for that five-minute goal. You're just talking distance to any fire?
That's a distance.
Of any sort of building?
Yeah, so pick a fire station and draw a circle around it, that five minutes.
No matter what the type of building?
Yep, that's anything.
Okay. And then about the, you said that percentage that you gave on the resource reliability, so those, that percentage of time that that fire station's not able to respond, I'm assuming another station or the next closest station is responding?
Correct.
Then, okay, is that just, all right, I wanted to make sure that?
Yes.
That's what you meant.
So for example, I was looking at a project the other day. The Station 4 was, is the closest, and it is, it's right at five minutes to the very edge of this development. If they are out on a call, the next due is nine minutes away. It's one of those ones that's kind of way out there. And when you've got a nine-minute response, and again, that's assuming Engine 14's in quarters, then you have Engine 17, which is 11-minute response, and then you have Cunifier, which is also in that same area, which is a 10-minute response. So again, now we're getting into that whole, your way out there. And obviously, with fire, it's a big problem. Or with a medical call, obviously, the longer you're without, you know, the proper care, harder to recover from.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Olson?
Could you go back to the report that talks about the aerial devices?
The aerial, yeah. That guy right there.
Did I understand that we don't have an aerial device?
We do.
We do?
Yeah, Truck 31.
Okay.
Runs out of Station 1.
Okay. And so we're okay citywide with that one aerial device, or do we need to be concerned about response time?
The response time typically for the aerial, our goal is 12 minutes on the aerial, because we have one, and it's covering the whole district. So we have a 12-minute response time for the aerial. And that, we're usually pretty good there. We do have, in the tenure CIP, to add an additional truck. I can't remember what the year was off the top of my head. I want to say it's five years out. We'll add a second truck. But we do have one. The issue is, when you get into, so typically, if you get a structure fire, you get a battalion chief, a ladder truck, and three engines. If it's a confirmed working fire, you get the whole thing over again. And because we only have one truck, that second engine, or second aerial is either going to come from Eagle or from Boise. So there's going to be, again, that response time that we have to wait for Truck 6 or Truck 7 to get here from Boise to help out with the fire.
Okay, thank you.
And how frequently is that truck called out?
The truck, well?
The ladder truck?
For?
Any responding, is it a daily basis?
Well, right now, Station 1 is the busiest station.
Okay. So it's only called out specifically if the ladder truck is needed, or is it called out on any structure fire? Do I understand that right?
It's called out on structure fires. And then right now, because we're running Engine 36 out of that station, it is being, it's being held for structure fires, auto accidents, auto accidents with extrications. There are specific things that will cause it to be dispatched. So if Engine 36 right now is running everything, so they're running medical calls, again, we're trying not to put too many miles on the truck, because it costs a lot to run it. So as we're running that, and that's the purpose of putting the squad in Station 1 also, is to keep that truck available for fires, auto accidents with extrication, rescues, whatever it's, because that's what its general purpose is, is for that. It's a specialized unit, it really is.
Any more questions? Commissioner Seal?
Going back to what Commissioner Cassinelli mentioned, just as I'm reading through some of the reports, especially when we're looking at high-density dwellings, and we're putting a lot of those in, sometimes when we read through those, and again, knowing that you're not meeting the goals that are there is very helpful. But again, some kind of synopsis, and it doesn't have to be, you know, I don't want this to go in, I don't want this to go in, but when I read through, and like, resource reliability goal isn't being met, and then there's risk identification that's going in there, like it is, you know, a multi-story, high-density unit.
Right.
When I start to read those things within the report, and it's not painting a great picture.
Okay.
Something, either, you know, something reassuring from you, or something that says, you know, this could be a problem, because we are, you know, in the process of quite a bit of those buildings going in. So we want to make sure that we're giving you everything.
Okay.
Giving you everything that you need, as well as you giving us all the information that we need.
Sure, so what I can do is, at the top of my report, I can put some type of a synopsis of what you're seeing.
Okay.
All at once. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, because it is, I mean, the Fire Department report, that's, I mean, that's one of the first ones I dig into. You know, I want to make sure that we can respond with, you know, any kind of emergency that's there. I also look at the traffic, because that's going to play into it. So when I start to see several little things, they all add up in my mind, so I just want to make sure that we're giving you every opportunity to kind of signal if something is maybe not quite right.
Got it. Madam Chair and Commissioners, also, one thing that I also put in my reports that I didn't put in the PowerPoint is if I feel there's parking issues. Because when I first took, the very first week I became the Fire Marshal, I became the parking guy. I started getting phone calls about people parking illegally in fire lanes. And so I've been working with Caleb and Sonia and the rest of the planning staff on making sure that these developments, you talked about the high density and everything, have enough parking for visitors or whatever. Because when you have a 50-foot lot, and you have driveway, 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 there's nowhere for anybody to park. And that's the problems we were finding at our apartment buildings, is they get garages, but they don't use them to put their cars in, they use them to put their stuff in. So that's something else you may see on the report as well.
Thank you very much. I think what Commissioner Seal was trying to communicate is that the information that you're providing is great, we just don't have a, we don't know what the standard is. We don't know what the expectation is. So to compare what you're sharing with us to what actually should be, or what the ideal is, or what is the safest for the community, I think that's where we're not quite understanding it when we read the report.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Good.
Was that all the questions? Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. And reach out to me, I'm always available if you guys have questions.
Oh, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing. I will explain the public hearing process. We will open each item. This evening, we only have the one individually, and start with a staff report. The staff will report their findings regarding how the item adheres to our comprehensive plan and Uniform Development Code with their recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward and present their case for approval or denial of their application, and respond to any comments by staff. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant is finished, we will open for public testimony. There is, there are two iPads there on the back table. If you're interested in testifying, please do sign up at those locations. Any person testifying will be allowed three minutes. If you're here speaking for a larger group, which it doesn't look like will happen tonight, we will sometimes allow for 10 minutes.
we will sometimes allow for 10 minutes. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to come back and respond if they choose to do so. Then we will close the public hearing, and the Commissioners will have the chance to discuss and hopefully make a recommendation to City Council. Okay, at this time, let's open our public hearing for Goddard Creek Townhomes H-20190068 for the purpose of continuing the hearing to October 24th, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
I move we continue item H-2019-0068 for Goddard Creek Townhomes to the date of October 24th, 2019, as requested by staff and the applicant.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to continue H-20190068 to October 24th, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mission carries. Next, we will open the public hearing for Inglewood Place, H-20190090, and we'll begin with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. The applications before you tonight are an annexation and zoning, preliminary plat, and two conditional use permits. The site consists of 8.84 acres of land, it's owned RUT in Ada County, and it's located at the northeast corner of South Eagle Road and East Victory Road. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north is one, single-family residential, rural residential agricultural properties owned RUT in Ada County. To the east are single-family residential properties in Sutherland Farms subdivision owned R4. To the west is South Eagle Road and single-family residential properties owned R8 and R1 in the county. And to the south is East Victory Road and commercial and single-family residential properties, zone CC and R4 respectively. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is mixed-use community. Annexation and zoning is requested of 10.29 acres of land with CC zoning, which consists of 3.76 acres of the site, and R15 zoning, which consists of 6.53 acres of the site. A conceptual site plan was submitted, as shown, that depicts how the site is proposed to develop with a mix of commercial, retail, three pad sites along Eagle Road, and a large office building consisting of approximately 12,300 square feet, a nursing and residential care facility, and senior age-restricted 55 and older cottages, which is proposed as multifamily, consistent with the mixed-use community future land use map designation. Preliminary plat is proposed, as shown, to subdivide the property, consisting of eight building lots and one common lot. The plat is proposed to develop in two phases, as shown there on the bottom diagram, with residential portion developing first on the east side of the site. One right-in, right-out access is proposed via South Eagle Road, and one full access is proposed via East Victory Road, with the provision of a new north-south local public street, which will stub to the north boundary for future extension and interconnectivity. Staff is recommending the access via Eagle Road is only allowed on a temporary basis until such time as the property to the north redevelops and an access driveway can be constructed in alignment with East Moon Dipper Street on the west side of South Eagle Road. At such time, the driveway access should be removed and a landscape buffer along Eagle Road extended. Additionally, an access easement should be provided to the property to the north, and the driveway along the east side of the retail pads extended to the north boundary for future interconnectivity and access via Eagle Road through the property to the north. And that driveway we're talking about is right here. And I will bring up an aerial view of the property, hopefully. Not sure what's going on with my internet tonight, but I guess we'll forego that. So a 25-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Eagle and Victory Roads, and a 25-foot-wide buffer to residential use to the north on the CC-zone property is required. The McDonald lateral crosses the southwest corner of the site and is proposed to be piped, that's what you see right here in the dash line. There is an existing 15-foot-wide ingress and egress easement that runs along the northern boundary of the site, and that is this area right here. That benefits the adjacent property to the north and is required to be preserved. An attached sidewalk exists along Eagle Road and along Victory Road on the portion of the site nearest the intersection. A detached sidewalk is proposed where none exists along the remainder of the frontage along Victory to the east boundary. In mixed-use developments, public and quasi-public spaces and places are required to make up a minimum of 5% of the development area. None of these types of spaces are proposed in the development. Therefore, staff is recommending, as a development agreement provision, that these spaces are provided within the commercial portion of the development, with buildings arranged to create common usable areas such as plaza or green spaces in accord with the comprehensive plan. A conditional use permit is proposed for a multifamily residential development consisting of 14 dwelling units on 1.91 acres of land in the R15 district. And that is these units right here along the east side of the site. They are seven duplex-style, single-level structures, and they're proposed for age-restricted 55 and older independent living senior cottages. They are required to go through a multifamily, and we're terming them multifamily residential, and go through a conditional use permit because there are more than, there's more than one structure on a lot. So that makes them multifamily per our code. A minimum of .1 of an acre of qualified open space is required to be provided within the development. A total of .29 of an acre is proposed, which exceeds UDC standards. Site amenities are proposed, consisting of a gazebo and barbecue area in accord with UDC standards. This development will also have access to the amenities located in the adjacent nursing and residential care facility to the west. Off-street parking is proposed in excess of UDC standards. A total of 14 covered spaces and 11 uncovered spaces are required. 14 garage spaces, 14 driveway spaces, and 25 surface parking spaces are proposed for a total of 14 extra spaces. Another conditional use permit is proposed for a nursing or residential care facility on 3.48 acres of land in the R15 zoning district, consisting of 86 dwelling units. And that is this structure here, kind of in the middle of the development. The proposed structure varies in height from two to three stories and will house 46 independent living, 30 assisted living, and 10 memory care units. Parking is proposed in excess of UDC standards. A minimum of 43 spaces are required. A total of 84 spaces are proposed, consisting of 23 garage spaces and 61 surface or uncovered spaces. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the residential care facility, which varies from two to three stories in height, and the single-level duplex-style senior cottages, which is shown here on the right. Conceptual elevations for the three-story office structure and the commercial retail pads proposed along Eagle Road were also submitted, as shown. Commercial structures are required to incorporate some of the same or similar design elements and construction materials as the residential development to unify the development. All structures on the site are required to comply with the design standards listed in the Architectural Standards Manual and obtain designer view approval with a certificate of zoning compliance application. There were a couple letters of written testimony on this application. The first is from John and Juanita Sharp. They are the property owners directly to the north of this site. They, it's on this property right here. They do have a 15-foot-wide, excuse me, 15-foot-wide ingress, egress easement for access to the east end of their property that lies on the subject property along the north boundary. They are requesting the easement area be free of any curbing and landscaping, and that all buildings, berming, and landscaping be set back so as not to interfere with their easement. The landscape plan, shown here, depicts a driveway on the west end of the site, and that's this little area right here, to the Sharp's Garage, Cruelle, and Field, but depicts landscaping and a pathway within the remainder of the easement area, this area right here, to the east boundary. A fence is also depicted along the north boundary of the site, which will interfere with their access. To ensure this easement and access is not affected by development of this site, staff is recommending condition of approval number A3E in section 8 of the staff report is modified as follows. Currently, it states, depict the existing 15-foot-wide ingress, egress easement along the northern boundary of the site. I'm proposing to add the following text, free of trees and bushes, grass is allowed, and pedestrian walkways. The fencing shall not restrict access to the easement and its purpose. And that wording is in and you're hearing outline. And then the second letter of testimony was received from John Carpenter, their applicant's representative, and they are in agreement with the staff report and the added condition of approval that I just mentioned. Staff is recommending approval with the requirement of a development agreement and the conditions outlined in the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia. The Commissioners have any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Casinelli.
Sonia, I've got a couple. The future access via Moon Dipper Road that you, we can't, I can't pull anything up here either, where is that located?
Yeah, Commissioner Casinelli, Commissioners, if you look at this conceptual site plan, where my pointer's at, that's Moon Dipper. It's on the west side of Eagle, just a little ways north of this property.
So that would be in the, is that the property owners to the south then that have the easement? It'll go through there eventually?
Property owners at the north boundary.
Okay. I also have a question about parking. They've addressed the parking with the senior living facility, and I have a question, is that, I mean, the standards are 40, it only requires 43, is that accurate in that, in that space? And there's some limited, or I mean, independent, but there's also, obviously, there's some people there that can't drive, you know, but then there's staff, there's going to be staff and other, other people in that facility. Is that enough parking? And then, part two of the parking, nothing's, there's no comments about parking in here on the commercial spaces? We didn't?
Commissioner Casinelli, parking for the site that does meet all UDC standards, the residential portion far exceeds our minimum standards.
What about the parking on, for the commercial? Because that's not known.
As I said, it all meets our minimum standards, and that is conceptual at this point. When we do get in a final plan, we will review it for compliance with the parking standards at that time.
Okay.
Sonia, I guess one thing that's not totally clear to me is, so nursing and residential care is allowed in the MUC zone, correct? So what are the biggest differences between how this is proposed and the MUC designation? Is it just basically the quasi-public space in the commercial area that's different? I saw a note in the staff report that usually in the MUC, there's less residential, but because nursing and residential care is allowed in that, can you help me understand that? Am I getting my wires crossed on that?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm not sure if I'm totally following your question, but the MUC is the future land use map designation, not zoning. The R15 zone is where the residential care facility is proposed.
Let me clarify my question. So in the MUC, there's usually a percentage of different types of uses, right? So are they meeting those? That's, I guess, my question.
They are, yes, yeah. The proposed development is in compliance with the MUC future land use designation.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
One more follow-up question to what Commissioner Casinelli asked. When that road eventually gets realigned up to the north, if that happens at some point and they vacate the other road to the south, would it become a full access at the north side on that, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the street name. Moon Dipper. Would that be a full access, or would that still be right-in, right-out there?
Commissioner Holland, Commissioners, I can't answer that for sure, that would be an ACD call.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, at this time, will the applicant please come forward?
Thank you for letting us present this evening. I'm Jim Peterson, I'm the developer. Have with me-
Jacob Shirley, I'm with Think Architects.
If you would please state your address for the record as well.
My address is 6609 Old Mill Circle, Salt Lake City, Utah.
I'm out of 5150, now I got to remember my address. 5150 South 900 East, Salt Lake City.
Thank you very much. Go ahead with your presentation.
So, thank you, Sonia. I mean, I think she's covered the presentation really well of what we're planning to do. One thing that I would like to add, this is the site plan, which we've already went So, one thing I would like to add is, we have had an in-depth study, market study done by JLL, which is a national firm, does feasibility and marketing studies, and we are very confident that the demand is, is real in the Meridian area. So we think this is something that is really needed, and will help the community a lot.
Let me go back to that site plan, since you've-
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to kind of discuss a little bit about how we're trying to marry this project with the community and make it a good project for Meridian. Again, Sonia did such a good job, she kind of took a lot of our steam. But when we designed this, we definitely wanted it to fit in and add to the community. And so some of the things we've done is we've really focused on the massing of the project. We want that massing to, to fit in. For example, the easternmost part of the project where we have what we call our cottages, those are pretty small little units, and I think that they'll go well with the existing homes that are just to the east. They fit very well. And if you look at the commercial pad on the west end, we've put the smaller buildings up front. And so as the experience of the citizens, as you drive down Victory and Eagle Road, is that first, you're going to see the beautiful landscape buffer that Meridian requires, and then it's, the buildings are going to step up from there. So we've really made a lot of effort to hide the massing of the buildings. One thing that Sonia mentioned, she said it was a two-to-three-story building in the middle. That has been updated, it is a one-to-three-story building. So actually, as you're driving down Victory Road, you're going to see just a one-to-two-story building, and the majority of that mass is hidden behind it. And the, I just want to bring up again, she mentioned the parking that we exceed our count early on. It was mentioned from the Fire Department that that is a concern. So we've always focused on making sure that we provide enough parking for everybody, plus some. And she mentioned the 15-foot easement that's to the north, that we have some landscape issues. Unfortunately, I received that information a little late, but we fully plan on altering the landscapes, the landscape plan to the, to the north, so that we can respect that 15-foot easement. We're more than happy to do that. Another thing I want to point out, we have these, these massing studies, these were done kind of early on, so there has been some slight adjustments. For example, the roads, the parking layouts have changed a little bit. And again, the massing of that central building has been reduced a small amount. So on the southern side, that three-story building is actually a two-story building. We've kind of pulled some of that back, just so that there's less massing on Victory Road. We want this to feel like a, you know, a small community, we want this to feel like it's a small-town project. This is the, one of the concept run rings we've developed for the central senior facility, senior living facility. This, we're looking at this, imagine you're standing on the proposed private road, looking west to the entrance of this building. This is great, because if you look to the left, that's kind of towards Victory Road, you see that it's a very small building. In fact, the building that's in the distance to the left, as I said, has been dropped since this concept's been developed. since this concept's been developed. This is an example of the cottages. We're, we're calling them the cottages. I think the official term is the multifamily. These will be next to the existing single-family homes that are just to the east. Again, we're just trying to respect the neighborhood and build something that fits. This is an example of standing on the corner of Victory and Eagle Road. This landscaping doesn't necessarily reflect the landscaping plan, because again, this was done early on. But it's good to see that what we're trying to do is create small mass up front. And, and since I'm showing all these renderings, I also want to talk a little bit about our materials. We want this project to feel unified. We want to use quality materials. We want this to look as beautiful in twenty years as day one. Again, we really want to add to the community. So we're looking at kind of some traditional, small-town architecture and a historic color This is that, it's actually an existing curb cut that's coming off Eagle Road. We want to enhance it, make it a little better. Jim, do you have anything to add?
I think that pretty much covers it.
Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Olson.
In the independent living that's in the facility, not the cottages, what's your experience as far as the number of people that, or the percentage of people that actually have cars to drive?
I would say in the independent living, most do have cars to drive, especially in the ones that are in the cottages, definitely have cars. The other part of the independent, I would say, I don't know exactly, they could change fifty to sixty percent probably.
On that, I'd like to add that one of the features Jim is offering is some detached garages, and so that as some of these people move into independent, and maybe they have some stuff they haven't been able to get rid of yet, we're, we're definitely making an effort to hide that, so the air, the project looks clean. You know, maybe there's an extra car that they don't plan on driving, but they don't want to get rid of yet, that will be hidden from sight.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Castanelli.
Gentlemen, it was mentioned on the public spaces, and, and also, Chairman Perot mentioned, mentioned this briefly, I think we talked about it earlier, but it, there's a requirement for, I'll just read the paragraph, a mixed-use developments, public, quasi-public, public spaces and places are required to make up a minimum of five percent of the development area, now these types of spaces are proposed. What are you thinking in that for, for some of the common areas in those areas?
We're trying to include as much amenity as possible on the cottages or the multi, multifamily units. There is some green space, and we're adding a gazebo with barbecue, so there's some outdoor area to enjoy. The senior living facility itself has a lot of amenities inside the building, including two exterior courtyards, that again, we plan on landscaping very nice. But the interior of the facility will have cafeteria, some medical, entertainment, exercise, things like that.
I think what I'm, what I'm asking here though, is, this is in, in the commercial portion, because it, the paragraph goes on in the staff report, therefore, staff is recommending, as a DA provision, that these spaces are provided within the commercial portion of the development, with buildings arranged, create common usable areas such as a plaza or green space, in accordance with, in accordance with a comprehensive plan. So, from that standpoint, in that commercial area, what, what are you envisioning doing?
Yeah, we, we agree with that, with the staff recommendation and, and of adding in the green area. So, probably less of the big commercial building to make up the land for that.
Also with the design, on some of the retail pads, we are including outdoor eating spaces, and we've designed the parking so that there's plenty of room for landscaping, trees, grass, things like that. So, we've really focused on making it more of a green space that you park in, rather than a parking space with some trees thrown around it.
Okay, thank you.
Do I understand correctly that, from the renderings, that the, the commercial area is going to be more retail rather than services being provided to the assisted living, residential living? Is that right? There's not, it's not going to be a medical focus necessarily, or, or is that to be determined?
It, well, we, we are proposing some office space. If, if, if someone comes along and finds that they can provide that service and it's feasible, then we're open to it, but it's not something we're specifically planning for, and it's not a service that the senior living facility will provide. I mean, everything will be in-house, best it can.
And it really will be a two-phase project. So phase one is the senior living, the community, and then, we don't know exactly who the end user will be on the commercial portion of the site yet.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for the applicant? Commissioner Holland?
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind pulling back up the site plan again, my, my question is about traffic flow through the site. I know if you're coming down Eagle Road and you're heading towards Victory, in order to turn into the site, since it's only a right-in, right-out off of Eagle, they're going to have to turn left on Victory and into the complex where the apartments and the senior living facility is, and drive through that to get to the commercial. You have any thoughts about how to provide better pedestrian safety? If you've got some of your residents that are trying to walk to some of those restaurants, do you have any traffic calming measures? What are your thoughts there on how traffic would flow through the site to get to some of that commercial space?
On some key sites, I would like to have a different texture painted on the road where the, the sidewalks cross the, the drive aisles. So it gives that sense that, you know, it's a shared space, so that is a concern.
So to even clarify that further, would you mind showing us, do you have access to the pointer there? Can you show us where, if a resident is living there on the east side in the cottages, where they would walk to get to that commercial?
I'm assuming this works as a pointer. Okay. So if you, if you're in this facility, you could come out and you cross here, or if you come out one of these doors, you cross here, and then you go to your facilities, to these commercial buildings. Or, you can go across, does this thing still work? Cross the top here too.
Is there any crossing on the bottom? Is there any walkways on the bottom?
Yeah, there is a sidewalk along here also. So, we have three points between the residential and the commercial that someone can walk.
And that connects to, is that what the, this kind of this wavy line is here at the bottom? Is that a pedestrian walkway there?
I'm not sure which wavy line.
Where it says, or is that just the berm?
Right here.
Oh, okay. In, in the, the center of the project, the, the wavy sidewalk is part of the landscape design standards, that they, they want the sidewalk to meander through that, that berm.
But that could be used by the, the folks in the cottages as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any additional questions? The applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You'll have an opportunity to respond to public testimony at the end if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll take public testimony. Do we have anyone signed up?
Madam Chair, four citizens are signed in, but nobody indicated a wish to testify.
Is there anyone present who would like to testify? Please come.
Can I change my?
Okay, yes, absolutely. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes for your presentation.
Ted, if I want to. I'm the HOA president.
Hi, I'm Jason Attlinger, two-six-two-six, South Trisham Way. I'm the HOA president for Sutherland Farm, which is the property just to the east and to the, the northeast as well. Just want to point out, we are strongly in favor of this project. It sounds good compared to some of the other ones we've been here for. Just as long as the plan goes as forward, presented to staff with no huge, you know, when it makes the city council with any big changes or anything like that. My kind of only question is if they've taken into consideration with ACHD's ten-year plan of expansion of Victory Road, I know which is going to go to a four-lane, same with Eagle, how that's going to change the landscape plan, if they've taken that into consideration in their initial conceptual design here. And then, the other, only other concern I have, like I said, we're mostly in favor of the project, is a left turn off of Eagle, everybody knows. You know, the only light there is the one to the north, EasyJet, where the boy was hit and killed two days ago, or down at Victory. So making a left in this property is going to be very difficult, especially about, between four and six P.M., right? We know that. So, if you were to go to a blown-out view of this, you would see our subdivision, EasyJet is the north access. As you turn in there to the right, there's Sutherland Village, our newest addition. That road does not connect, but from this is, this drawing here, if you were to kind of draw your attention to that, from Victory, and then go north, the easternmost road that connects to the north and then comes to a private property, that's not connected. But if, imagine those two northern properties, if they were to be developed or taxed out of their, and made, made to move, I don't think they're for sale right now, but let's just say developed is a nice word. If they move and that road continues to the north, that would be the access. They've cut in through EasyJet, where there's a stoplight and they're protected, and they make a southern route in. Or go further, further east into our subdivision and take the next one down. I'm not sure the, right off, off the top of my head, what the name of the road is, but that'll bring you out just outside of this drawing to the east on Victory. So you can imagine, you know, wait for a left turn signal, backup traffic, because I don't think there's a turn lane in, from Eagle Road into, I don't know the name of the ones, the zone where it says Zone C there. I don't think there's a turn lane there presently, so I don't know how they get in there. That's the only thing I would, I would say would be kind of an issue or a consideration, because other, coming down to Victory, Victory would probably be less traffic and going into the south, or cutting east to come back down, you know, kind of loop around that way would probably be the better way in, just from my perspective. But like I said, we're mostly in favor of this project. It looks good. These guys have been cooperative, and they've considered us. We've talked about a, a fence to go along the eastern side of the property where they're proposing the cottages, to replace the existing fence that's been there before, so we don't have two fences buddying up and have like snakes and wildlife growing in there. And then, we've talked about the north as well, landscaping plot and everything looks good. So pending any large changes from here to the actual next, I guess, presentation would be before the city council, we don't have any major issues other, I just ask you to consider those things.
Caleb, would you actually mind, would you mind responding to his question about the widening of Victory Road and whether there's right-of-way that's already been dedicated?
Madam Chair, commissioners, I tried to look it up. The internet is not performing, so I'm not sure. But part of this process would be that ACHD will, will acquire, preserve the right-of-way they need. That's not to say though, some of this landscaping may go away. I don't know that for sure, because I don't know what they're preserving for at that intersection, but they will buy enough and, and then will at least have the minimum after the roadway widening in the future. So there is planning that goes into it. I just can't confirm that the site plans you see actually depict that.
I did see, I believe, when I was on their website last, it's proposed to go, I don't know if it's the five or ten-year, to, from Cloverdale to, I think, to Eagle to stop in the next phase, and they're going to do Cloverdale from Overland down south to Victory. So, it's going to happen. Obviously, we wish it would happen sooner, because we know this, we're way behind in the roads here, but I just wanted to know if it was considered, and if it has.
So did you understand, basically, what he's saying is-
With the landscaping, yes.
Yeah, if, if ACHD needs ten feet, as an example, and there is a twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot landscape buffer requirement, they're going to make sure there's thirty-five feet there.
And then a turn lane would probably be my only other thing, like, in there, because I don't know how far that goes back up, backing up traffic to the, I mean, that'd be a, I mean, I'm thinking of traffic congestion. If one person's trying to make a left coming south on Eagle Road in there, that could back up traffic even further during that high-volume time. So, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? Please come forward.
Madam Chair, commissioners, my name's David Galliano. My-
Please speak into the microphone.
Madam Chair, commissioners, my name's David Galliano. I live at thirty-four-seventy-one East Beamer Court.
Thank you.
That's one of the houses just east of this proposed property. And speaking with my neighbors, and if I can speak for them, if you don't mind, we're all completely in favor of this project. If we're ever going to build anything behind our homes, we're ecstatic that they're going to build a facility like this. We think it'll enhance the whole neighborhood, and of all the things that you could build behind our home, this is one of them that we would certainly support. And that, these guys have been awesome in working with us, and the only question I would have and concerns is again, like our president mentioned, from the HOA, we're really looking for them to put a vinyl fence or a new fencer between the two properties, and we're hoping that can be done. In a matter in which we all have dogs, so if they were going to put a fence there, we'd want them to take the old fence down and put a new fence up as quickly as possible, so they don't have months where the fence is down while they're in construction. So, if they would work with us on that, we would appreciate that.
Okay.
That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming up. Any others? All right, thank you very much. Okay, would the applicant like to make any response?
Matt Graham, thirty-eight-hundred West Perugia. I'm with two engineers, and I just wanted to address the comment about the, the roads that they have and what the access are. We'll be working, we've been working with ACHD, and based on that location and how it's situated, this layout of the roads was kind of, there's gone some back and forth and kind of deemed the best alternative for this location and how we're going to provide access to the property. We're still waiting to review the ACHD report to make sure that, you know, we're complying with all their requirements and regulations that they'll have for that site, so.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Holland?
One question, since you're up here talking about roadways. I like a lot of the elements of this plan. I think it's really well laid out to provide a transition from the residential. My biggest challenge is again, how the commercial's going to function with getting people in and out of there and getting traffic flowing through there. Are there conversations in how you're looking at this that might reconfigure some of that to make it easier for transition in and out of the commercial section? I don't, I'm not sure how to brainstorm with you on it, but that's, that's my biggest concern, is where the ax, the main access is going to be off of Victory. I'm worried about some of the same comments that we heard, that, you know, it's, it's tough to turn in there, it can back up, if that's the only main entrance to the site, especially if the Eagle Road's only a right-in, right-out. Just makes me a little bit nervous with the commercial. I'm not sure if you've got any other comments. I don't know that I have a pointed question, but just wanted to open that up to the applicant, if you wanted to say a few comments about that.
And to clarify on Commissioner Holland's statement, concerns that it would back up along this public road right in front of the homes, the senior cottage homes, just safety concerns with that.
The, the only comment I have on this, is like I say, the phase one is going to be the senior living community, but, and then the commercial will be a, a phase two at a, at a later time. And these properties to the north, I can see those will be getting developed, and this will probably be commercial all along here. And then there's another full access that will be going in. That's why the city or the staff would like this, this access to be temporary, because there'll be a full access up here farther. I mean, it's kind of just brainstorming, but it's kind of how I can see that.
So are you saying you would be in agreement to not start construction on the commercial section until there's full access permitted?
Um, no.
Okay.
But I think we would, we would end this road, this, this, this road, so it, it butts into this northern property, but very easily could be. I mean, that is not, phase two is not, we don't have a, any schedule for starting phase two at all. It's like phase one is the priority.
So let's say that that, that doesn't actually occur in that, in that timeframe or in that capacity, and, and we're still left with what we have here, how do we address any congestion issues on this Victory Road exit? If you have cars coming and going out of the commercial area that are driving past the, on the south side, driving past the, the large facility?
Maybe you could speak to this, because this is TO engineering and ACHD worked together on this for like six months, so this kind of, what they come up with.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I wasn't in the, the meetings where, with ACHD. I do know that they went through this, you know, quite a bit, and, and found that this was the, the best option for that, until we could, you know, the staff report for, for ACHD for that. I, I couldn't speak to that, unfortunately, so, sorry.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Castanelli.
Can you address the, the fence issue that was brought up?
Yeah, we'd be more than happy to work with the neighbors on, on the fence, and, and if they'd like a new fence along there, I can, I can see that. I think a new fence would be great, and we'll definitely work with them on keeping it down for as small a window as possible, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. At this time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing for item number 20190090?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for Inglewood Place. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I've got a question for staff. Since I can't, unable to pull up the full staff report, what I was seeing, what I was, when I was reading it through it earlier, the density, especially when you get into the assisted, the independent assisted living facility, seems greater than the R-15. Does that need to be, is, am I correct, or is it, does it fit within the R-15? Does that need to be addressed this evening?
So, Madam Chair, excuse me, Commissioner Castanelli, the R-15 zone actually doesn't have a cap on density, so the 15 doesn't relate to a maximum dwelling units per acre, so that is not, back in the day, our code did use to have that, but it has more to do with dimensional, so lot sizes, heights, size of buildings, those types of things. It doesn't have anything to do with, with the actual density. So no, you don't need to address that.
This fits within that?
Correct.
Okay. And then Caleb, if I may, Madam Chair, what, again, can't look at the full staff report, the, the property to the north, what is the, what is that displaying on the future land use map?
Yes, again, Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioner Castanelli, that is also the MUC, Mixed Use Community designation back in, Sonya may have it in her report here, mid 2000s, all those property owners came in and asked for a comp plan map amendment together because they, I don't remember what it was designated before that, but they came in and petitioned the city to, to change all those properties to mixed-use community, I believe almost all the way up to EasyJet, if not all the way to EasyJet.
Okay, so that will.
Same designation as this property.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarver.
I, I think with what's in front of us tonight, as far as our scope of what's being asked, I think this fits great within our land use map with, with obviously the neighbors, the need for it and the community in general. I, I do agree with Commissioner Holland a little bit with that retail, but with the access to it off Eagle Road, but if they're committed to having that in a later phase as that land to the north develops, that'll probably take care of itself. I don't, it probably won't be real rentable because, as retail, because somebody's going to, else is going to figure that out as well, that they don't want to be stuck there on that island.
Mr. Holland.
I think I made it somewhat obvious what my concern is. It's, it's really just about traffic flow through the site, because I want to make sure we've got a place that's safe and easy to navigate and get in and out of. I'm actually even concerned if the, I think the access on Eagle being a right-in, right-out will help a little bit with it, because people can go down Victory to get in, and then they'll head back out on Eagle Road if they're heading to the, back to the north. I'm a little bit worried if that access goes away, if it makes it more challenging, reconfiguring that up to the north to even get in and out of that complex. And I don't know that we can, I don't know that it's our purview to say that we want that to not be a temporary access, but I, I do see some concerns with taking that access away. I'd almost rather see that stay as a right-in, right-out and have a full access up north that interconnects with this at some point in the future, but maybe not relocate the access. Just a thought to throw out there.
I agree.
I'm in full support and agreement with that.
Yeah.
Caleb, can that be kept?
Yeah, Madam Chair, again, Commissioners, yeah, that, that condition, I can pull up what condition that is, that talks about that being a temporary right-in, right-out until that connectivity happens further to the north. I did also look, the Moon Dipper is about 630 feet north of the intersection. ACHD standard is 660, so you're right there for full access. Like Sonya said before, we can't guarantee that will be a full access, remain a full access forever and ever. If there's a bunch of accidents, they'll probably put a median in, but more than likely that will be a full access point. If you want to keep this one, even once that goes in as a right-in, right-out, just modify the condition. I'll look that up and see what condition that is to modify. I, I will just say, sorry, Madam, or Madam Chair, that, that is subject to ACHD approval, obviously, too, but if you're okay with it remaining post, they need to buy off on that too, but we wouldn't be restricting that as the city. ACHD could still restrict it. So no guarantees they get to keep it, but.
Caleb, do you know what condition number that is?
Again, I'm going to look that up right now and then I'll share that with you all.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Overall, I, overall, I like the, I like the, the project a lot. I like it that the neighbors are in support of it. That's, that always speaks well. They've, they've worked together, and I think keeping the, I mean, it, it will flow to the north. The design I like a lot about it. I, too, am concerned about the traffic flow in there, the, the, want access to get out on Victory Road. You've got, everybody will be flowing past a senior living facility where, you know, let's, let's face it, I'm not as spry as I used to be. Could I run out of the way of the, of somebody flying through the parking lot? I don't know. My, so I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that. And so to me, that, that having as much access on Eagle Road is, is important. The other question, so I, so overall and all, I like the project. My other concern here is the, coming in off Victory Road, that says public road there. And maybe, and Caleb, maybe you can answer this for me, because I, I don't recall, will that go through to the north, or is that a dead-end street?
Madam, excuse me, Madam Chair, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I really started listening to you when I heard my name, so I missed the first part.
Okay. The, the road coming in, the access coming in off Victory, that's a, that's shown as a public road there.
Yes.
Basically going between the cottages and the, and the independent living, assisted living facility. Will that, is that a dead-end, or will that eventually connect up?
Okay, thank you for repeating that. Madam Chair, Commissioner Castanelli, no, that is a stub street that will be extended, so you essentially would have two parallel, one being a driveway, one being a street that will extend to the properties to the north. Similar frontage-backage road system that we're looking for in other parts of the city as well, so you don't have to get onto Eagle Road. Again, this shares the same designation as properties to the north, so we envision some similar land uses to the north, and we don't have to hop, have to hop on Eagle Road and back off if you're going to go between those types of businesses, per se. So that is a, a public street or future extension.
Madam Chair, if I may, add one, one last thing into my comments. That's a concern to me in the future. You've got, you've got, you know, senior living, you have cottages here, they're, they're going to be crossing over for a lot of the amenities, for meals and these sorts of things that are in the main building. And then you've got, you've got traffic that, unrestricted traffic that's going to be flowing through there. So that, that kind of adds to that traffic flow concern that I have. I don't know how to, you know, I mean, it would require a total, you know, redo on the layout here, so it's, but I'm concerned about that.
Any other thoughts? Madam Chair. Mr. Holland.
Couple more questions to Commissioner Castanelli's concern. I think we could potentially put a condition that they have some traffic calming measures or, or crossings painted there as well on the public road to try and help mitigate that, because I've got the same concern, when you've got senior living apartments and a road that could be extended in the future. The other question, too, is, and hopefully staff can help us answer this, but do you know where the main entrance for the senior living facility in the center would be? Is it on the east side or on the west side for the main entrance?
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Holland, I, and I've closed the public hearing, but I saw some of the renderings, and on the east side appears to be the main entrance. You know, there's a drop-off area, so that would be what I would be considering anyways, their, their main entrance. The service area is on the backside of the building, on the, on the west side, the west-facing facade, so I would definitely say it's oriented back toward that public street you guys are, are concerned about. I would just echo your comments, and again, it's going to be an ACHD roadway, so anything that goes in, traffic calming-wise, would, would need to be coordinated and approved by ACHD. But chicanes seem to maybe be a, a good implementation in this place. You have some curvilinear stuff that you could potentially do with even some of your curbing. They could pop some of that out or painting. It looks like they have kind of right in the middle of the project, a painted crosswalk or some other material in there to call that out. But you could do some of those other things at those common driveway locations as well to slow things down, speed humps. Yeah, there are different, different things. I, I will just, I understand your concern. Don't envision that being a heavily trafficked public street even in the future when it is extended, though. Again, we anticipate other outlets, east-west and north-south, so don't anticipate the volumes to be in the thousands, but there would, there will still be some additional traffic in the future, certainly. But that is the intent, rather have it here than on some of your arterial roadways that are already congested and sending them through intersections that don't have a very good level of service.
So, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I, this is usually Bill's questions, not mine, but on the parking note, there's ample amount of parking, there's no question about that, but if the main entrance for the facility's on the east side, if visitors coming in, I imagine that they may be using the visitor spaces across from that Porte Chez, whatever that says, entrance that looks like it's designated for the cottages as kind of the point to park and walk into the facility. So I don't know if we want to have discussion about that, too, because it looks like the service entrance is where all the parking is.
I agree. Yeah, I'm sitting here flipping around this layout in my brain, trying to, not that I'm, you know, the engineer by any means, but just, I'm just sitting here thinking about how this actually will, will function, and I see a lot of different things that, that are causing me to have questions similar to the two that you've pointed out, so. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Seal.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
Sorry, I'm talking a lot tonight.
No, you're fine.
Would we want to entertain, as a commission, reopening the hearing just to hear their thoughts about the parking on that public road and entrance with the main access and see if they might be willing to reconfigure that a little bit to add some additional parking for, towards the main entrance, or if they can answer some questions about how people would go in and out of the building?
I would invite you to make a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we reopen the public hearing for, sorry, I'm losing it, H-2019-0090, Inglewood Place, just for the purpose of asking the applicant to discuss with the Planning and Zoning Commissioners about the parking and function of the central building.
It has been moved and seconded to reopen, reopen the public hearing for Inglewood Place, H-20190090, with the stated purposes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind coming forward again. Thank you for your patience with the process.
Thank you, Jacob Shirley. Our thought process with that is that we, we assume that many of the residents in here won't be driving themselves, and so we've designed this so that whoever is driving can pull them to the front, drop them off, and then go around in the back and park, or if you are a resident, you can use a side entrance. Largely, that entry is going to be used for new arrivals or emergency vehicles, and we, we designed it this way so that the, the parking isn't right in the front. We wanted to make the, the street feel more like a street with buildings on it rather than parking. Does that answer?
Madam Chair, can I?
Mr. Holland, please do.
So if, I've been to a lot of senior living facilities from friends, family, that I've, I've gotten the chance to go visit there, and I don't know that I'm the only one, but I, I tend to be lazy sometimes if I'm in a rush, and I'm going to find a parking spot and I'm going to get to the main entrance so I can get in there and, and go talk to who I, I want to talk to. I imagine that you'll probably have a lot of people who will look for the easiest way to get into the building. Can you talk a little bit about, on the west side of the building, it says service, but is that actually another main entrance into the building, or is the main entrance that you want all pedestrian traffic to go into if they're visiting loved ones or family? Is it going to be the entrance on the east?
Well, we do have the service there a little bit to the north of that. There is another entrance that goes into some of the amenities that the facility offers. So if you are familiar with the project, you could enter back there and you would come into kind of a lounge cafeteria, bistro area. There is also two doors that are just to the south of the project, so if you, again, if you're familiar with the project, you could enter through those doors. And also, they're, they have a little less accessible, but there are two doors to the north also. So there, there are multiple points of entry. You, you can be lazy. It's, it works.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Seal.
Just a question, I, I mean, something that might help with that is just some signage, some basic signage for the parking that's more designated for the cottages, basically just letting people know that that's designated parking for the cottages. I don't know what, if there's any enforcement that would go along that, with that, but that way, if, if Commissioner Holland decides she's going to visit there, she knows not to park in there. That, that would be something that, you know, would be more of a recommendation than something we would probably put into.
So we're, we're not here to tell you how to design this. However, we, we look at these applications, you know, frequently, and we hear frequently from the public about the different concerns on, on layouts, so we appreciate your patience with our questions about the specifics on this design. We realize that this isn't the set design and that it might still be a bit conceptual. Can you talk to us about other layout ideas that you've already reviewed and considered? Specifically, have you considered bringing the, the large building on the front and putting the cottages in the, on the north side, a large building on the south side, and running the public street up on the, on the east?
We have gone through a lot of designs, and, you know, as been, has been mentioned before, the access points on Eagle and Victory Road have been a huge driving force on this. We have kind of looked at rearranging things, but we, ADHD does want us to have this public road cutting from south to north, and so we've had to divide the residential the way we have, other than rotating it 90 degrees, because that, that road has to go in there. And we can't move that road any further to the west, because then it gets too close to the intersection, and we can't move it any further to the east, because then we don't really have enough developable space. So ACHD has been a pretty large driving force on this design. Even with the right-in, right-out, that's, that's been a pretty big discussion, and this has been the, the compromise. This is kind of what we've ended up with as the best-case scenario for this project.
And has there been a consideration of putting the main entrance on the west side and then just having like a membership access entrance for the cottage dwellers?
We have had that conversation. The concern is sales. If people arrive for the project for the very first time and the entrance is in the back, it's a lot harder to find, whereas if you're familiar with the project, you, you know where to park, and then you can enter the building.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
Just a couple more comments for your consideration. I, overall, I, I really like what you guys have done here. I don't want to discount that. I think it's a well-thought-out plan. I think it's something that will fit really well in Meridian, it's a good place for it. I like the commercial mixed-use concept. I, I think it'll be a nice amenity. As you're looking at the site plan, and again, some of this is conceptual, my suggestion, and again, take it with a grain of salt, but if you were maybe to do some angled parking on the public connection road coming into the site, or doesn't take quite as much of the perpendicular space, perhaps you could relocate and reallocate some of that green space on the backside where you have some of that other parking and kind of balance it out a little bit. I just think you may end up having some challenges, too, with people that want visitor parking, and if you labeled it just that as this is visitor parking for people who are coming to visit their, their loved one or whoever it may be, that might be something that would help alleviate concerns once you get to council, too.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Any more questions for the applicant before we close again? Thank you very much for coming up and answering our questions.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Madam Chair.
Mr.?
I just wanted to, uh, circle back on the, the condition location. It's development agreement provision. It's Development Agreement Provision A1F. That's on page 37. You all probably don't have internet access either. It looks like it's down. But again, it's Development Agreement Provision A1F. I can read that to you if you'd like.
That would be great.
It currently states, "The driveway access via South Eagle Road is restricted to a right-in, right-out access and is only allowed on a temporary basis until such time as the property to the north redevelops and an access driveway is constructed via South Eagle Road in alignment with East Moon Dipper Street to the north on the west side of Eagle Road. At such time, the driveway access on this site via South Eagle Road shall be removed and the street buffer extended in place of the driveway." You simply could end that, "At the driveway access via South Eagle Road is restricted to right-in, right-out." If you want to remove that temporary provision that's currently there.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for H-2019-0090. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, I, I am in favor with the proposal to leave that right-in, right-out. I don't see any downside to that at all at this point.
Any other comments on that specific item?
I was trying to look through the, because there was a note, I mean, we noted that basically it was an, it may be an ACHD requirement, so if it's an ACHD requirement, I don't know that we can, could probably comment that we would like to give him an exception, or did we just ask for that exception? I mean, how does that work for this?
We just do an amendment to the staff report, subject to ACHD approval.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
If I was going to write out a condition change, I would just say something to the extent of removing the condition of the temporary access on Eagles, right-in, right-out, and working with ACHD and future applicants if the property to the north develops to have cross-access and connectivity. I don't know if that works, but something like that where we encourage them to develop together so that those roads connect internally, and then they can share that access to the north as it comes in someday.
That sounds good.
So, Madam Chair, just one more thing on that. The next provision in the staff report actually addresses what you were going to add to that. That's why I said you simply could just leave that, because it goes on to say, "An access easement shall be provided to the property owner to the north." And so, kind of covers a lot of that. I mean, you could, you could restate that if you'd like in that provision of work with ACHD, but that's really what the next condition already covers.
Sure. Would you just restate, then, earlier what you said we would need to do to that motion to make it? Just, all we need to do is remove everything after the...
Yeah, "The driveway access via South Eagle Road is restricted to a right-in, right-out access." You could put a period right there. I'll just read Provision G, then, just, it says, "An access easement shall be provided to the property to the north in alignment with the north-south driveway on the east side of the future retail pads depicted on the site plan. A recorded copy of said easement shall be submitted to the Planning Division with a certificate of zoning compliance application for the adjacent development." So, that covers, again, that that, then from that right-in, right-out, once that comes into the site, continues on to the north, and it's reciprocated in the future.
More questions for staff? We at a point where somebody would like to make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Castanelli.
Before we make a, before a motion comes out, I just, I'm, I'm going to show my cards here. I'm, I got a huge problem with that. The more I look at it, I got a huge problem with that roadway going north-south. I know they've worked with, you know, they, this is not, it doesn't sound like this is the applicant's first design in what they're, what they want, but it's what ACHD forced them into. But I've got a, I've got, there's little we can do. I mean, ACHD has pretty much said, this is where you're putting a road, and it's going north-south, and it's going to access roads to the, roads to the north. But I've got a, I just want to state my opposition to, to that, and I love ACHD.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
Couple more comments to maybe help ease Commissioner Castanelli's mind. I think with the north-south public road there, most likely, that's going to be used for internal connectivity. I don't think that they would be allowed to continue it just as a straightaway into the development. They probably would curve it at some point into a parking lot, and I would hope that ACHD would take that into consideration. But I think the one thing we could do to help that in the future, if, if that isn't the case that we can affect, is to implement traffic calming and safety measures, working with ACHD and staff, to find something that would be appropriate to help with pedestrian connectivity there. I don't know if that helps.
Little.
Are you proposing that you add that as?
As a motion?
To the staff report?
The only other thing, too, is do we need to, on the, working with the neighbors on the east boundary, it was requested, Caleb, that they work with replacing the fence. Do we need to condition that, or is that already in the staff report?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Holland, I didn't check the staff report to see if that was other, already covered. I mean, you could simply take the applicant up on their, you know, being in agreement to have that vinyl fence on the east side, and then it's covered, and we'll add it as a condition if it's not already covered.
So, we don't need to make that in the motion?
You don't have to. I heard, I heard the developer commit to it. And again, it may already be covered, but if you want to just ensure that it's part of that, you could add it as a condition as well.
Sure.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Mr. Castanelli.
Caleb, can we condition for traffic calming?
Again, Madam...
On a, on a public roadway?
Madam Chair, again, you can add that condition. It's going to be subject, though, to ACHD design approval, so you can add that. The way that I would word that, you know, would be to work with ACHD to provide traffic calming materials as they allow on that public street. You don't have to add that language, but then it's, you know, what you really don't want to do is put them in an impossible position. If we have a condition that's hard and fast, says there's traffic calming, or you don't have a project, and ACHD says there's no traffic calming, they don't have a project. Worded however you'd like, but my recommendation would be you leave them out that ACH, subject to ACHD approval because it's going to be their road.
Caleb, could you condition that, that it, it's only required if the property to the north, or if and when the property to the north? It's hard to do because then the development's already done by that point.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I mean, there's really two issues with that. One, you're retrofitting something, and two, you know, I don't know what their, their whole scheme is to keep and manage and whatever here, but it could be, you know, we don't have a hammer at that point to make them go back in, and they've got certificate of occupancy, and they're up and running a business. To remember in 10 or 12 or 15 years that they're supposed to put in traffic calming there, it'll just get lost in the shuffle, quite honestly.
Even with the DA agreement?
Yeah, but there's no trigger. Like, we don't know to go back and look at another development agreement off-site for a northern project to say, oh, now it's time for us to come...
Okay.
To who knows who owns it at that point in time and say, oh, did you know you're on the hook to do? We just won't likely catch that condition. Maybe, maybe our systems advance, and we don't miss those types of things in 10 or 15 years, but right now, that concerns me.
Madam Chair.
A little bit like this is peeling an onion tonight, huh?
Yeah. Mr. Holland.
I can attempt to throw something out there unless there's any other discussion.
Please do.
All right. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council File Number H-2019-0090, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 3, 2019, with the following modifications, that we modify Condition A1F of the Development Agreement to just read that the driveway access is restricted to right-in, right-out access, period, and remove the temporary out of that. That we would ask the applicant to work with neighbors on the east boundary towards replacing the fence. That the applicant would work with staff and ACHD to implement traffic calming signage and/or safety measures to assist with pedestrian safety on the public road entering the site from Victory as allowed by ACHD design policy. I think that's it.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to recommend approval to City Council for File Number H-2019-0090 with the stated amendments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. Motion carries. I'll take the last motion of the night.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second. Sorry, I didn't hear you. It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for October 3, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.